All right, ladies and gentlemen, I have seven o'clock, so why don't we get started? We have a sparser crowd than usual tonight, but that's understandable, given the elements. We'll start with our traditional moment of silent reflection. And we recognized just two days ago, the 12th anniversary of one of the worst days in the history of our community with the Sago Mine disaster. It's amazing to me that it's been 12 years already, but let's continue to keep the fallen miners, as well as their families, in our best thoughts, prayers, and wishes to say. Thank you very much. And Mr. Mike Cozad, one of our representatives with the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project is here this evening, and I've asked him, as a veteran, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Mr. Cozad ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce to those of you who may not be acquainted with a couple of our newest hires. Assisting Ambie Abley in the taking of the minutes tonight is Alice Teach. Is that, did you get drafted into this? Is that...
Yeah, I came for the parking ordinance.
Oh.
I was there for the minutes.
You came to complain, I see. Well, welcome, Alice, we're glad to have you here. And in case you didn't know, Tuesday was Callie Cronin-Sam's first day as our new information facilitator coordinator and grant writer. And welcome to City Council. I had to, as I was going through the agenda draft, I forgot to tell Theresa and Barb to add you to the list, but henceforth, you'll be on there with everybody else, so.
Ease into it.
Say again?
I could just ease into it.
Ease into it, well, good, good. We're still counting on a full report, though, Callie, you're not getting by easy, right? Yeah, she's already got millions of dollars she's bringing this time. You never know. Okay. The only other guest that we have is Rhett Duzenberry, who's been here before. Mr. Duzenberry, do you want to say anything to council, just...
Well, on behalf of Congressman Mooney, greetings and glad to be with you again. And I'm sorry that the elements are as tough as they are, so not to have a really good crowd, but it's good to be with you, and I would like to thank Buckhannon for all their assistance in Chamber Create and also the use of your facilities over here. Y'all have allowed us to do office hours where we can help folks with VA, Social Security claims, et cetera. And I've also, I'm looking forward to meeting you, I've been working with Jay on some letters of support for, we already got those out with applications for the generators for the waste water and freshwater.
Awesome.
So, we're working, ready to get busy with you and help y'all any way that we possibly can, and thank you for recognizing me, and everybody stay warm.
Yeah. If any extra gazillions of dollars over there in Washington that Congressman Mooney can help us with, Callie will be happy to, you know, sign you up with some grant stuff, so, yeah, we'll look forward to working more with you. Thank you very much. All right, I think that's all the guests, except Kami is here again. Hi, Kami, did you want to say anything? Just observing as usual. Department Board reports, Jerry Arnold, our Public Works Director. Jerry, you're first up.
Good evening. A new director's report. We have an employee safety training meeting scheduled for Monday, February 12th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That's a mandatory employee meeting. The first, I have Sue McKissick from the Epsom County Health Department is going to be there as a presenter. And the topics she'll be presenting are bloodborne pathogens, adult alienizations, and how to deal with collection of needles. So, also have Mr. Ty Bradley from Brick Street, and Ty has put together a list of topics based on our loss runs for the past couple of years with our workers' compensation. So, it'll be a very informative meeting for the employees, and again, this will be our first, would like to try to maybe do to a year, we have all of our employees together at a safety conference. Also scheduled, the first of several first aid CPR and AD trainings or certification classes for all city employees with our fire department. The class will be free of charge, but there's a $25 charge to issue the certification card. And again, you know, our Waste and Street Department certify every two years for first aid CPR, and our fire department is able to teach that, so we've got all of our departments signed up now to have first aid CPR and the defibrillation training.
Do we actually have...
We'll be presenting, I'm working with J.B. Kimball right now, we'll be presenting in our next year's budget, and have a presentation to council about supplying these automatic defibrillation devices at different areas in Buckhannon. All of our departments were talking, want trade on, having Jobo Park, areas that we have a diverse age group that are utilizing facilities. I think we need to step up our life-saving game a little bit, so we're looking at doing that.
Would we install those at the various physical plants like water sewer and the big...
Absolutely, absolutely. We had this discussion in ways several years ago.
She wants one at City Hall.
That's one of the, one of the primary locations at City Hall, but again, because you have...
All people work in here.
That one, that too.
You just never know.
I don't have to do much, I come in.
Well, one of the things, one of the, well, part of the discussion on that is, we are trying, and again, you know, that Rod Kimball is an instructor with the American Heart Association, and so J.B. has a pretty good resource in raw to go to. And one of the things that, one of the discussions we've had is having equipment that is currently used by the emergency squad here in Buckhannon and the fire department, the same type devices. That way, there's a shelf life on some of the components. That way, stocking of those components will fit any of the machines that we have in the system. And also, it's also a plus that if we administer that at one of our locations, that we can essentially just unplug the leads on our machine, and the leads from the emergency squad will form directly into those paddles. So, again, that's some of the discussion we're having about the actual equipment, so there'll be more to come on that in the very near future. Supervisors, again, still, we're still on the safety topics, we're doing independent, or individual department safety assessments, and we will amp that up with a, fire department will start doing facility checks for us, and again, we'll just, they'll come in and assess situ, or the working situations, mission, make sure we have up-to-date fire extinguishers, our monitors, CO monitors, things are up to date and what, so just another step in the ongoing overall safety plan we're trying to implement in the city. Water Department, the water's been, and as Ambie knows, the water's had numerous frozen water complaints, and it's usually on the service side, so again, it's the weather focus. The guys have been out there trying to, and it's a difficult time for them. Victoria Hill Water Storage Tank, contractor didn't work this week because of the weather, but they do have two bands of the tank and the roof completed on, so it's moving along. Sewer Department, Dan Baker received his Class IV Operator Certification. The alternate agreement policy was approved with the sanitary board, and working on updating the storm sewer manual details. Projects in progress, the project on Swisher Street replaced culvert crossing. The sewer components complete, culvert replacement will commence when the weather permits. Task completed, Bogus Street Sewer and Storm Sewer Line Replacement is complete, with the exception of some cleanup work. Under Waste Department, the towder carts have been ordered, so we'll be working on that over the next several months of getting those delivered. Street Department, I don't have anything new to report, other than they've been working to snowplow and been doing some interior reorganization of our street garage, while other bits. Under Engineering, Jay, just some updates on some of the projects that Jay's been working on, FEMA Generator Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, application one and two submitted. Is addressing the additional information request from FEMA, and will submit the additional no later than January 23rd, 18. City Council, Water Board, Sanitary Sewer Board document review, and the mayor's signature is required prior to submission. The Water Department, early warning monitoring system phase one, continuing to work on the bid package, anticipate advertising for bids on the 19th of this month. The ECP Water System Improvements, the revised agreement was reviewed, revised by city personnel and sent to committee for review and execution. Anticipate receipt of agreement by January 11th, prior to the Water Board meeting. Gateway West Engineering Survey will begin design of project on January 8th. The Elizabeth J. Binkin-Townstead River Walk Trail Extension, Grant Number Four, as you remember, that's one we applied for last grant cycle and did not receive, so we're reapplying. Callie's working with Jay for the resubmission of that, and it's got a due date of January the 18th, and the same with the Gateway West Phase Three Transportation, which is the south side of the Gateway West product, project. Again, it's a resubmission of the grant that we've previously submitted and were not successful with. And that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Questions for Jerry Arnold?
On the Gateway West project, where's it terminated? I mean, does it go under the bridge towards Lincoln addition, or stop at the...
No, it terminates, it terminates at the off-ramp. It does not cross the tracks.
North side will go to the tracks, is that right?
The north side, yes. The south side will terminate prior to...
Highway holders there?
Right there at the, where the bank comes into, because in order to get it further, we would have to do a lot of stepping that bank, and they've already had a big slip there to start with, so the north side is just going right there at the end shorts, what is...
Better way.
Yeah, the end shorts.
And what are the costs associated with the AED, or the defibrillators?
Ballpark, Ballpark CJ is somewhere between $1,200 and $1,500 per unit.
We're probably thinking $10 or $12 or something.
Well, that's, each department, within the department budget, you will see those for the facilities, but within general fund, I can imagine initially three to start with, but I would like their vision. And again, that's the device, we will have to construct, they make a, I don't know how I want to say this, it's a box that makes it difficult, yes.
Break-in box, break glass when needed.
Makes it difficult to just grab the device, you have to work a little bit to get it. So, you know, with that being said, I would like to see, over the next course of the next couple of years with this program, see them in every one of our parks.
If there's cameras.
Yeah.
Are these mandatory classes for all employees at that?
The, the safety meeting on the 12th is a mandatory meeting for the employees. The first aid safety training is very strongly encouraged, and it's done during work hours.
Are these, Jerry, when the department heads are going through and talking about the critical things they need and all that kind of stuff, this additional equipment and stuff has been brought up and discussed between them?
Well, we have, we have...
Or you've been doing that for a long time?
We've discussed this for some time about the, about the AEDs, and we haven't, we haven't, I have not heard anyone say, but no, we would not want this device in our, or in our facility.
I think it's a great idea to have something like that, especially when you consider the people that we have in Jobo Park on Friday nights.
We are, we are, we're retirement community.
That's exactly right, I think that's a great idea.
With that being, my, I could something, yeah.
Ultimately, Stockard, the Colonial Theater, other places where we would have good-sized groups of folks. Other question for Jerry, he's asked to take his leave after his report, so if you've got something you're harboring that you want to ask him, that's speak now or forever.
Oh, I've got a statement, I've got a statement for the inaugural Callie Report.
Ah!
In case the press...
I'm a bit familiar with this million-dollar account spend.
We're going to start holding you off till the end, Callie, to keep the crowd moving. Didn't realize you had a following already, that's great.
That's true.
Okay, Jerry, thank you very much. Tell all the guys, you know, 5:30 the other morning, when it's garbage truck time, and it's four or five below zero, and our truck guys still hanging on the back of those trucks show up, and the water lines freeze up, and they're out there, knee-deep water, it's, tell the story about, who was it that had the blast? Jerry Wongly took a blast to the face.
He was on the leak the other night, and his foot slipped, they, in order to control while it was blown off, in order to control it, they put their foot on the, on the leak and divert the water flow, and his foot slipped, and it just right in his face, it just drenched him. With these temperatures, you can imagine how...
Instant...
Refreshing.
Yeah, refreshing, that's a good adjective.
He's a weird guy, though.
Overfunds with our...
Director of Finance and Administration, Ambie J. Gens. Tell us we got some money to buy the defibrillator.
Callie's going to look for a grant.
That's good.
Okay, so, just ended our calendar year. General Fund Money Market had $649,444, ended at the end of December. Your CDs, I'll just remind you, they haven't changed much, $82,720 in a CD. Stockard Capital Campaign, $150,000, 516. Historic Landmark Savings Account, $3,000. Municipal Stabilization Fund, $510,000. Expenses for the month of December were more than the revenues. We had that ladder truck repair, which was around $16,000, and we had three payrolls in December. And then also, we had collected more B&amp;O in November due to some quarterly reports than we did in December. The VFI, Volunteer Fire Insurance Renewed, January 1st. This premium is shared by the city and the county, the city pays approximately 46% of that. Jamie delivered the information to me, last year the premium was $25,214, this year it's $22,180. And this is for city equip, we're paying our share, the city equipment and liability. Financing Jerry mentioned was completed for the Polycart towder system in the amount of $290,880. Now, this is the Waste Department, not General Fund, to purchase 6,000 of the Polycarts that will be delivered to our residential customers in the next several months, and I wanted to bring that out, since the news media is here, I've talked to Callie about maybe making sure some information's out there for the residents. It's, it's a cart that you would place your garbage in, rather than your own garbage It won't be picked up unless it's in that container. It will help us identify people who haven't paid, and it'll also help with our men, because an arm helps lift this item to put it into the truck, so it'll save on any compensation costs. Again, Callie's going to help me maybe try to get some information out about that, since we have about 6,000, we have about 6,000 waste customers. I want to remind council that the West Virginia Municipal Conference is January 21st and 22nd, and currently Robbie is going, Callie is going to attend, we suggested Sago to kind of get familiar with some of the, in this, other municipalities, and maybe learn how other governments work. And then the mayor's also attending. But I also want to remind you that the State Auditor's Office is going to hold four-hour budget workshops in February and March. Two of these are in Clarksburg and Bridgeport, and they strongly suggest anyone from council and officials to attend that. You really do learn some information. I always go, even though a lot of it's repeat, I always learn something new from it, and it talks about how the budgets work in governments, municipal governments, and it's free of charges, there's no cost to it. I've been working on the general fund budget revision, I'm not finished with it yet. I hope to have it ready by the next meeting. And then reminder that filing for the offices, there's two council seats open this year, and the reporter's position filing begins January the 8th, the deadline to file is January 27th. And then candidates must file for those municipal offices here in City Hall. And then I've talked to Callie a little bit about the volunteer grant, so if you want to segue into her planning that, we've been working on that a little bit. She's done the work, I'll just kind of answer some questions.
Very helpful.
Yes, Y.C., Capital Campaign, that doesn't reflect the last $4,000 or $5,000 that was paid.
The budget revision that I'm working on, I have to move everything around.
Yeah.
Because I've got to take some money out where it was, it was received into the general fund, and I have to pull that back out in a budget revision and send it off.
Good deal. Question for Ambie?
So, these 6,096 gallon Polycarts?
Yes.
This is going to be given to every city customer?
Every waste residential customer, that includes county, county.
Residential, so, because I'm thinking if there's an office downtown...
Not commercial.
Okay. That they might not have a place for it, you know?
Yeah, just, it's residential.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ambie. Okay, are we going to dial Tom O'Neill up, or do we just want to wait until we get down to the ordinance, so that we just have to do that one time?
I could dial him up, did you want Callie to talk about that little grant thing?
Since Chief Townsend is not here, Callie, do you want to talk a little bit about the grants?
Jerry had already talked a little bit about the recreational trail grant, what I've been working on, so I won't say too much more there.
You should let him call him. Then you can see the snake marks appear without being hurt.
That doesn't work, we'll try and dial it, but they showed dial it, I'm going to try there.
Let me say one of that, I can see. This is a dial-up prayer.
Hello?
Hey, Tom?
I can hear you.
Okay, you're on standby, just hold on there.
Okay.
Okay, Callie, let's hear it, give us the goods now.
Well, for everybody, I won't talk too much more, but Jerry already talked about the recreational trails grants, but I have been working on those a little bit, I'm all set up on the DOH Grants website, so I have access there. And Jay had already done quite a bit of the work there, so that's been, you know, fairly smooth process. I think we're going to be fine with that deadline, January 18th. Just as far as how I'm thinking I might organize the days, I'll probably be trying to do more of the information coordinator PR stuff right away in the morning, but I haven't, if you've noticed, there haven't been a whole lot of new posts or that sort of thing. I'll be meeting with Rich Clemmons to get administrative access to the Facebook page and Twitter and the website. He had been out of town, so that'll be happening soon, within the next, if not tomorrow, probably early next week, I'd say. So, you will start to see the posts there online. I think, I'm waiting at that point, I'll probably also send out some kind of introductory email to the press and other people in town, but I was going to wait so that I could have in the signature line a link to our Facebook page and the website, and everything will be up to date. Not that it isn't now, but just waiting for that transition first. And then the volunteer center funding that Ambie had mentioned, Susan had shared, I think it was back in late November, early December, an email...
For you.
Yeah, I'm looking for it. Volunteer West Virginia Grant, that's available for setting up or maintaining a volunteer center within the community, and can be either a physical presence or virtual presence or both. And you can be advertising volunteer positions or opportunities, not only within your own organization, but with other organizations. So, I thought it might be something of value to the community. We could list, I've come up with a little bit of a list of things that I thought we might, I can, I can email all of it to you, but I have the request for applications, of course, that I can send out, and then I also have what I started to put together as to what the city might be interested in doing with this. And, so I have listed kind of month to month, it's a year-long, the grant is only about $5,000 to $30,000 range, and then you can put that to use either through a part-time position, I thought that might be useful to have someone coordinating this, also for some web-based software, so that it will go right with the city's website, so it wouldn't be a separate site that they go to, it'll be correlated with the city's own site, and have a listing of several events, I thought, we always do the April Make It Shine in coordination with Epsom County, Solid Waste Authority, so that might be an event that have, have a cleanup. Ambie had mentioned that there's a, in the town, we might want to focus on to spruce up in the spring. Of course, there's also the Adopt a Highway Spring Cleanup that we could advertise in in May, of course, we have the Strawberry Festival, and I think that's when Festival Fridays kicks off, might need volunteers for those, that would get advertised on the site. In June, I've got the Community Gardens, and continuing Festival Fridays, of course, throughout the, throughout the season, as well as the Community Gardens. And then the Fourth of July Celebration at Dropin'. Jerry had mentioned, Susan, the Community Compost Day Program, so I thought that might be something where volunteers could be, um...
Jerry, man.
Maybe some adults volunteered, but also maybe getting kids involved, I think you mentioned Westland, but also maybe...
Well, we thought initially started with a couple of large, rather than being a household program.
Right, where they're generating a lot of food waste.
Yeah, hospital, something like that.
So, I thought that might be another project that could use volunteers.
What about Stockard, anything at Stockard?
Stockard, ongoing at Stockard, of course, they do the, a lot of sports and classes there, but I thought also maybe having a coding club or a makerspace type activities there, and have, and then we have a lot of people in the community that could come in and volunteer their time and teach different skills that both kids and adults might be interested in learning. And then maybe, November has, America's Recycles Days is November 15th, so I thought maybe doing some kind of combined campaign, then almost more of a social marketing, where it'd be good if you could reach out to volunteers who maybe can't easily volunteer in person, or just don't want to, they might be able to volunteer by taking a picture with their recycling bin as they put it out, and then post that online, and kind of challenge them to encourage maybe five friends to start recycling, get your bin and start having recycling pickup, or go to the Crossroads Recycling Center, take a picture of yourself doing your recycling there, and then hashtag it Buckhannon Recycles, that sort of thing. And then just under ongoing, I had Stockard, oh, I forgot, the January, February, maybe doing Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, and then in February, the Go Red American Heart Association, so, those might be, it's a year-long grant that can be renewed for three years. So, at this point, I'm just testing the water, seeing if you think this is something that we should pursue, but the deadline for the grant is January 16th, so we have to move really quickly if you do want to.
Do you think you would have at least outlined an application as early as next Thursday, the 11th?
I have it, I need to have a, like a tentative budget, but I would want to know, like, the budget that I have going right now has a part-time coordinator in it, so hiring a part-time coordinator. It also has travel, I didn't mention this part, September is National Preparedness Month, so I thought we could get... so I thought we could get our CERT and VIPS people involved, those volunteer groups, and maybe use some of this funding to send one of them, or two of them, to the CERT program manager training that's coming up in Evansburg, Maryland, and then have whoever goes to that train more volunteers, and have them do something in September to promote preparedness for all of our residences.
In the perfect world, and we would need to post this no later than Monday, we could have a special council meeting right before the Water Board meeting, and the reason water is perfect, four of us on council will already be at that meeting, so we'd have a quorum if others couldn't be there, but if others could be there, that'd be terrific. But do you want, do you want to tentatively counsel set a special council meeting for, say, 3:45 next Thursday, the 11th, for us to be able to act on this application?
I think it's good, but can I ask one quickie question?
Sure.
What about reaching out to, you know, you're always hearing about the literacy volunteers, they never have enough people to help teach people to read, is that something that maybe we could throw in there? Because I hear that a lot, and I know that they're always talking about stuff at the parish house and here and there, but the literacy volunteers would.
Yep, I'll add those to my ongoing need volunteers.
Callie, my nonprofit management class this spring looked at a couple of different city websites for, about, how they solicited volunteers, and a couple of them had applications for organizations that wanted volunteers, so that someone from the city would then decide, is this appropriate to be part of our volunteer center? And then they also had, you know, the, like you said, the job listings and the job descriptions, put then an online application for people who might be interested. So is that what you're thinking, that the volunteer coordinators will manage?
And I started looking at those, but if you have more, you could chair from that class.
Yeah, I will, because they were really disparate, because what they were looking at was the welcoming-ness of those sites, whether it would make them want to volunteer for the city or not.
I think the one that was looking somewhat promising to me was, it started with Serve Technologies, I think, but it's actually a C, C-E-R-V, that you see that one?
No, cool, I'll see what I have to do tonight. But then the other thing that I was wondering about, so, I know that this grant is funded through Volunteer West Virginia, but is their source of funding something that is renewable? Because, you know, I mean, some of it would be seed money to get their stuff going, but then how do we run it, keep it going?
They say it's renewable for three years, but it's 20% a match in the first year, but that can be in kind also, 30% in the second, 40, so it keeps embracing, the match keeps going up.
Okay, for us to sustain it.
And then it's, you know, the commission through National Community Service.
So do you foresee the budget for the, residency budget for the proposal, do you foresee that being spent on setting this up, and then it's something that you could maintain after it's up and going?
I think the budget I was looking at, perhaps asking for around 25.
Matched 30, is I right? I think I read that.
Well, it was, I have it split right now, I was just using their budget worksheet, I'm going to be calling in, too, they have another technical assistance, it's called tomorrow at 11. So I had some questions about the way they have the budget, they have it completely broken out in their example worksheet, where each expense, they're showing, this is our share, this is your share, but I would, I want to know if possibly, you know, there's aspects where we might be able to contribute, where it's not a direct, you know?
Right.
So.
Definitely. Yeah, five to 30,000.
Yeah, about 30,000.
But, I guess, that's why, I guess I'm thinking, since it's renewable, and then they're expecting the city to start sustaining it, you might think about what you could front-load that they could pay for, the grant could pay for, and then maybe step back on the request to be sustained, because I think it will take time and effort to get it set up.
Well, for sure, that's why, we could definitely scale it back, I don't know if particularly the online management system, you know, I put a paid one in here, but there may be free ones, or we might be able to just do that with the existing website without that.
Are you moderately optimistic that we could have an application ready by next Thursday?
Yes.
So, the question is big, may I have a motion that we schedule a special and short city council meeting for next Thursday, January 11th, at 3:45, the Water Board starts at 4, so in 15 minutes, we'll quickly discuss this application proposal and act upon it. May I have a motion to that effect? Mr. Skinner has made a motion to that effect, seconded by Council Lady Albaugh, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question, all those in favor of the motion to schedule a special city council meeting, one week from today, at 3:45 PM, for the exclusive purpose of considering and potentially approving this grant application, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like, sign, the minutes will reflect that the motion carries unanimously. So that's great, Callie.
Callie, will you use some of the proposal out to us in advance, so we'll have time to look at it? And then I have a question for council, since now we have Callie here, do we want to set up some sort of alternative approval process? Do we have to approve every single proposal that she submits?
Yeah, I think the council still is required to approve all grant applications.
Okay. Maybe we could do it electronically, or something?
She can pile them up in a big stack, and we'll just run right through them.
The only other thing I have is that I'll be at Rotary on January 30th, so do you have anything you'd like included in that presentation to Rotary?
Great.
About that?
What, you could speak before the chamber?
What's that?
That's right.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Thanks, Callie, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hitting the ground running, right? Correspondence and information, and Ambi, I'll impose upon you to explain this, West Virginia State Tax Department, letter regarding the Assessor's Budget and 2% Fee.
Yes, that's just, you get that annually, the assessor gets 2% of the budget for the taxes that are received, to manage the taxes at the assessor's office, and I put that in there as information for the council. There, we have a full budget from him, it's to pay, they use it for supplies in their budget, they use it for wages in their budget, but 2% collecting the taxes from the assessor.
We don't need to act upon it, we just have to do it.
So that, this says that the grand total, 42,279, that's what we're, that's what they're holding back from dispersment?
Yes, they keep that. When we receive the taxes from the sheriff that has that 2% listed in, it is deducted from our.
Has it always been 2%?
It's been 2% for as long as I've been here.
Takes us down to the consent agenda, three items, the approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting of December 21st, the approval of our building and wiring permits, and the approval of all general fund payment of bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. So, I have a motion by Mr. Skinner, and a second by Mr. Rylands, is there any discussion on that motion? I'll call for the question, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Tom, are you still with us?
I am.
Good, did you, did you, did you like all those motions, Tom, did that make your night?
Yeah, I always, I love.
Did we do them right, correctly?
Yeah, you're over there in Parkersburg, is that right?
I am, and I sincerely wish that I was there.
Yeah.
I thought he was in home.
It's a lot warmer over in Parkersburg tonight, is that right?
No, I have no idea, I haven't been outside.
Drinking again, huh, Tom? Just kidding, Tom. Strategic issues, I'm going to, I'm going to work your report right into the ordinance considerations, you want to start out with your general report, and then we'll evolve into ordinance 422 and 423?
Yes, that's fine, and, and I appreciate the council, and Mr. Mayor, you're, you're allowing me to participate in the meeting by phone, I sincerely regret that an unavoidable conflict is cutting me away in person this evening, but to report, matters, there are three matters that have taken up the bulk of my time over the past few weeks, and, so forgive me if any of these have been previously discussed, but the Dominion A P D Water Plant Ruben Project Improvement, I'm sure Jerry mentioned that that's the final item sent off, I don't know what the status of that is, in any event, I was working on that, there was a human resources issue that we're working through, and then finally, matter which we'll discuss here again, is the drafting of the ordinance criminalizing the dumping of asbestos at the transfer station. So, those are the matters that I've spent the bulk of my time on, you know, as well as, you know, general, you know, advising to committee heads, or, you know, department heads, and so on, so I'd be happy to entertain any questions, or we can move on to the two ordinances that are, that are on the agenda.
Any questions of a general nature for Tom before we take up ordinance 422 on second and final reading?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You know, given the great news from the center, I don't know to what degree that has possibly been discussed earlier, but it might be advisable just to, to know that there, we have some new issues with compact backhoe, that, that will probably be taking it some time, and, and I will keep accountable, appropriately informed as those developments.
Yep, thanks, Tom. Ordinance 422 of the City of Buchanan, Amending and Modifying and Reenacting Ordinance Number 409 of the City of Buchanan, Known, Cited, and Referred To as the Buchanan Parking Ordinance. Tom, this is, all of the little tinkerings that we did are reflected in this current draft, is that correct?
That is, right, and really, the only amendment that was made at the first reading was to remove the 24-hour restriction on the two-hour, 24, the 24-hour restriction on the two-hour cumulative parking. So, in other words, the two-hour parking rule will remain unchanged from what it is now, the balance of the ordinance disappeared on first reading is as it was on first reading.
Thanks, Tom. I would entertain a motion that we approve on second and final reading, ordinance 422 of the City of Buchanan. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh, and a second by Mr. Rylands, is there any discussion on the motion, Mr. Skinner?
I just want to point out that, right before, on the very last page, it does, it does say, this ordinance shall be deemed effective 30 days from the second reading passage and adoption by council February 3rd, so, so are we?
That's 30 days from today.
Okay, so where, this is it?
This is it.
This is it, okay. Because we had discussed, I thought, maybe doing this, running this a third time, last time.
It wasn't necessary, because we incorporated the changes at the last meeting.
Okay, all right.
Pam?
I wasn't here last time, but I've had some people shut up, concerns about the two hours downtown, you know, we have five hair salons on Main Street, and, slash businesses, and if somebody goes in to get a perm, or a hair color, or something like that, and they want to go eat afterwards, or do a little bit of shopping, it's going to be more than two hours for them to be in downtown, I plan it. And I would like to say, get changed to three hours myself, because, you know, I've mentioned it before in the past, and, you know, like they say, you can't even go in and sit down and eat, and go do any other, anything, because sometimes you not get out of a restaurant in an hour at a time.
Well, Pam, the idea with this policy, and we've had two-hour parking on Main Street for 30 years.
I know, I know.
The idea is to make even more liberal, for all on-street parking to be two hours, and we have eight city municipal parking lots.
I know, but.
If you're going to be longer than two hours, you should park the extra 100 feet in one of those parking lots, which you can park in for 21 hours for free.
Well, a lot of these people are older people that can't, you know, that are complaining to me about this, too.
You want to put this in the form of a motion, we've, we've, we've been advancing this ordinance.
I wasn't here last.
Well, this is, this is the same thing that we did last January 27th.
No, not much, two, three hours before, also.
So you want to, you want to make it in the form of a motion?
Yes, I would.
Mrs. Capery is moving that we change the two-hour parking policy to three hours, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, but I have a question, we already had a motion.
Right.
Can we have another motion in the middle of a motion? Or?
I made the first motion.
Well, this is, from a parliamentary, from a parliamentary point of view, this is a motion to amend the order, which takes precedence over, over other motions.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to modify the ordinance to, from two hours to three hours. Is there discussion on that motion?
Is this going to modify this being the second reading, we go back to go again here, or what?
Yes, we would have to have an additional reading, this is a gutting of this ordinance, absolute gutting.
You were going to say something, Tom?
Well, no, I was just, I was going to make that very point, that if the, if the motion carries, the ordinance would have to be brought back for a third reading in two weeks.
And we already have, how many signs? Jerry's gone, but how many signs do we have?
26 signs, something like that.
We have signs, and we have chickens.
Mayor, to speak to this, I kind of look at this a little bit like, maybe a restaurant table, you want restaurant tables to turn over. We want, we want parking spaces to turn over, and I understand what Pam's saying, because I brought up similar points last week, or last time, but when we were talking about regulating two hours only within a 24-hour period, the fact that that's, that part is gone, if you park for two hours on Main Street, you can park two hours on Spring Street, you can park two hours on Canal Street, you can park two hours in a parking lot, so if you go to lunch, and you're there for a while, you could move your vehicle from, in front of CJ Maggie's, for example, over to Spring Street, and therefore, you're not in trouble with the two-hour limit. I personally think two hours is, is, since we've taken out the 24-hour, the two hours within 24-hour limit, I think two hours is adequate for our downtown, because if we start increasing that, we're going to run into even more parking problems with people not turning over spaces quickly enough, and we're going to, we're going to run into people, the potential for more abuse of the system versus what we're trying to accomplish is people respecting the system, and making it able for people to come downtown and park. So I would be for, I would not be for three hours, I would be for two hours, kind of keeping it the way it is.
I think in a lot of cases, it does, the two-hour clock doesn't start ticking until Alice marks the tire.
That's right.
And the chances of your tire being marked.
At the exact moment.
With the exact moment, you're parked is pretty slim, and my guess would, I mean, I'm not talking out of school here, you make routes around, around there, you know, nine or 11, or?
I can give you a brief overview, I mean, it's, it's new to me, but on a day when I do parking, and I don't do parking every day, because I'm half-time parking, half-time office, I try to get out right at 8:30, so, you know, it's 8:30, it takes me 30 minutes if it's just, if there, there's nothing underway, you know, to make a lap. So that would mean I would go back again at 10:30 and start a new lap, it doesn't always work at exactly 10:30, it's not always that I'm exactly at 10:30 when I'm going back out, you know, maybe I'm making a driving control, so it's not exactly then. Once I start at 10:30, usually that's when I'm coming across someone who's been there, you know, I've got the second stripe on their tire, so, you know, I've got to stop and write a warning ticket, which you get three warnings, or two warnings before you even get a ticket, so that's adding time, you know, maybe someone's parked in a place they're not supposed to, that adds time, so I start that second route at 10:30, which would mean I would do another one at 12:30, well, usually, my lunch is from 12 to 1, so I'm not even doing another one until 1, so it's not exactly, yeah, I mean, it's, I try to be as close as I can be, and I'm never early, so no one's, you know, if I do happen to go at 10:30, or say I go at 1, and then I go again at 3, and for some reason, I'm going much faster at 3 than I am at 1, so that I'm on North Spring 10 minutes earlier, I'm not going to, I'm not going to cheat them out of their 10 minutes, I'll go and finish and go back that way, when they are always getting at least two hours in between.
Yeah, and that's probably the minimum. I mean, it's more like, it could be, you know, three hours without, you know, without getting a warning or a ticket because of the way your, your timing of your routes is.
Right.
So, I mean, at this, we have been talking about this in.
Three years.
A long time, and I don't really want to.
2015.
Try to change it at the, at the end. And I, I mean, and you, you speak about restaurants, our average table turn is 55 minutes. So that wouldn't really impact if you wanted to go shopping. I think, you know, hairdressers are a little different circumstance that could take longer, I guess.
Yeah, it does.
But I think.
But I'm saying there's five, five hair salons on Main Street, period.
Is there currently a lot of them getting citations? Or they're just afraid of it?
They're afraid of it, I think.
But it's not.
It's older people.
And do they need handicap accessibility? They can't park in one of the side lots and walk?
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Because that's what I was concerned about last time, older or handicapped people. But I think, you know, for quicken it, for two hours.
But this is the thing, if I go to get my hair colored, you're talking an hour and a half, two hours, if I want to go eat another.
But they could park, they could plan ahead and.
They could move their car down.
Right, but they could park in the lot to begin with.
We're talking about older people.
I understand.
You know, it's not easy, you know.
I am concerned about people who are older and.
I don't want to be incompassionate at all, but I, we, this came up in 2015 when I was still town attorney for Buchanan. We paid $5,600 for a professional to conduct a study and make recommendations to a parking committee that was designated by this city council. And those recommendations were vetted, they've been amended, it went through Consolidated Public Works. Everybody's been on board with this policy, and now it's time to do it. And I think the two-hour policy is what we should stick with. But there's a motion and a second on the table. We have now discussed that motion. So without further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote on Pam's amended motion to the ordinance to go to a three-hour parking situation. I'll start with Council Lady Capery. How do you vote?
To go for the three hour? Yes.
Yes, for three hours. Mr. Rylands?
No.
Dr. Adler?
No.
Mr. Skinner?
No.
Mrs. Albaugh?
No.
Mayor votes no. Motion fails.
Thank you for bringing it.
Now, we have still before us ordinance 3, 422 on second and final reading. May I have a motion that we consider the adoption of this ordinance tonight as it is now drafted?
Some of.
We already have that.
We already have one.
Well.
We did it again.
You can't really technically have two motions on the table at the same time, so we, we overrode the first motion with the amendment. So now I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh. May I have a second to her motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there discussion on the motion?
One more quick thing. I want to, I want to, I want to make sure that everyone understands that we're not, that previous discussions included language that involved the word meters. We're not putting meters back in. The North Spring Street lot will be using the kiosk. That is correct, right?
Some of the spaces.
For 18 space.
Yes, yes, but we're not reinstalling the meters that were taken out. I want to make sure that that is clarified for everyone, because I was, I've heard that a couple of times.
There is not a parking meter in Buchanan.
Right.
I think there's been a lot of misinformation discussions back and forth that.
Meters have all been removed. Where do you, where do you see a meter?
Across the canal, are they gone? They cut them off?
Cut them off.
They're in the, they're in that lot, they've just put tape around them.
They're just taped around them.
Yeah, but they're, they're there.
But they're still there.
They're there. They're not being utilized.
But they're still there.
They're artwork right now.
That's what I thought. Just pay them any attention, they're really not there.
That's it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance 422 as now drafted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Must sign.
Mrs. Capery is abstaining. The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted and will be effective on February 3rd. All right. Tom, may I have a second? Walk us through ordinance 423?
I would be happy to. Let me first read if I have to, just to get that out of the way. Ordinance number 423 of the City of Buchanan, and ordinance one, prohibiting the disposing, or the depositing of asbestos or the attempted depositing of asbestos at any facility owned or operated by the City of Buchanan Waste, Flush, or for the collection, transfer, or disposal of general waste or refuse. Two, establishing penalties for persons violating the provisions of this ordinance. Three, providing for eligibility of persons cited or found guilty for a violation of this ordinance for issuance of building or demolition permits or contractor licenses. And four, providing for restitution payable to the city for abatement. The genesis of this bill, it was founded in two events that took place at a transfer station on Mud Lake Road, where individuals demolished structures and the debris contained asbestos and then brought that debris to the transfer station where the asbestos was then found and the city was responsible for cleaning. And, and I don't have the exact figures, but those cleanup costs were somewhat substantial if I, if I, if memory serves.
Couple of thousand dollars, Tom.
Yeah, right, in each case. And so the purpose of the ordinance is to create a criminal offense for the depositing or attempted depositing of asbestos-containing material, which is defined in the ordinance, at the transfer station. Those penalties, and we'll go through the ordinance section by section, but those penalties include a first offense level and a second or subsequent offense level. So it would be in discretion to the municipal board how much to fine, and it also provides that a person guilty of violating this ordinance would then be liable to the city for reimbursement of all of the city's costs in the abatement, should the attempt, you know, come to fruition and the party who did the dumping be identified. So we begin, as most ordinances do, with several whereas clauses. The city recognizes, and the purpose of the, in the whereas clause is to reidentify the purpose of the ordinance, and that is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city, of residents of the city and visitors, particularly to the transfer station, and it goes without saying, without the employee, and the employees of the transfer station from being exposed to asbestos, as well as, I don't know if this is particularly spelled out in the ordinance, but it also goes without saying, to protect the city's financial interests in avoiding liability for illegal dumping of asbestos by other people. So whereas clauses are in there, we are, the city is authorized to enact this ordinance. Two particular things, in Article 8, or Chapter 8, Article 12, Section 5, the city has the authority to pass ordinances governing matters to prevent injury or annoyance to the public from anything dangerous, offensive, or unwholesome. It is, I mean, it's a matter of fact that asbestos is a hazardous material, it is found to be so and declared to be so in state code and in the United States Code and in state rules and in federal regulations. And the city, in its, in the first section of findings, adopts the conclusions of state and federal authorities that asbestos, and that is a, that's a shorthand term for some rather complicated chemistry, and we set that out, we laid that out in the, in the ordinance itself. Asbestos is defined, and we use the definition that's used in the Code of State Regulations to be clear about that. But the council will first adopt findings that asbestos is, in certain circumstances, a grave threat to individual and public health, that, that those, those certain circumstances are when asbestos-containing materials are torn down, gathered, and disposed of during the demolition, repair, remodeling, or refurbishing of a structure in which they've previously been installed, and that the bringing of asbestos-containing materials to the transfer station, transfer station is a violation of state code. It constitutes a public safety hazard and a public nuisance, and it results in significant financial expenses to the City of Buchanan, because the city then liable for abatement when other people dump asbestos illegally in the transfer station, and it's not caught ahead of time. We then move on to definitions section. Those are pretty straightforward, there are only four defined terms. Article 3 contains the actual prohibition of the Act of, I'll just read it, it's rather short. "No person shall park, leave, deposit, or put aside or dispose of any asbestos or asbestos containing material on the grounds of the transfer station or with any machinery, bin, building, pad, or facility located upon." The Act itself of dumping is a violation of the ordinance as well as the attempt. And for purposes of the citation, the intent would be if an individual brings a truckload of materials onto the property and one of the employees were to catch, you know, the individual with the materials in their truck or bin or whatever, before they actually made the deposit at the transfer station, they could still be charged for the violation of the ordinance for, for the intent. Article 4 contains the penalties, as we discussed earlier, there's a first offense fine of not less than $250 nor more than $500, and a second and subsequent offense fine of $500. Final, in addition, in Article 5 talks about restitution, that by ordinance, any person found guilty of violation of this ordinance will be liable to the city for reimbursing the city for all costs incurred in the abatement of the asbestos unlawfully disposed. So clearly, that would not attach in the case of an attempt that was warranted, but only in the case of a violation of the ordinance that was actually caused. In addition, as a deterrent for individuals, we've added, or we've included in the provisions of this ordinance, certain matters containing individuals who hold contractors' licenses and building permits. So any person that is cited or found, well, let me say first thing, if they're found guilty of an ordinance, the city shall not grant to that person any building or demolition permit for a period of one year following the final adjudication issued under the ordinance. And then there's a provision for stay, pending appeal, and pulling, which is some legal weeds that mayor may not wish to discuss. In addition, just the citation alone prior to a final adjudication will be enough to prevent any permits being issued to that person cited, just so that we could get, you know, we would put the brakes on any new permit issued to a person cited, just for the citation until it can be finally adjudicated. If, in addition, if any person is cited under the ordinance, any of their existing permits would be deemed suspended pending the final adjudication thereof. What we are attempting to do here, and finally, if the contractor license issued by the city that a person found guilty would be suspended for a period of one year following the final adjudication of the citation. And that provides for the severability clause that is in most ordinances and the effective date thereof. So with that, if the council were to pass this on first reading tonight and second reading two weeks from tonight, it would take effect on February 17th of this year. And with that, I would be delighted to take your questions.
Thanks, Tom. Questions, Tom?
Mayor, I have just one, you know, we're on the Waste Board together, the not less than, the fine penalty, Article 4?
Yeah.
$250?
Not less than $250, not more than $500.
Right. Do we think that's, that's what we voted on at that time? I was trying to remember.
For the first offense.
Yeah. That's the first. Second offense would be an automatic maximum of $500, no discretion to the municipal board, actually. And by the way, the Waste Collection Board did approve this, did recommend the approval of this ordinance by city council at its meeting earlier today. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing of the need for none, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance 423 on the first of, did I not get a motion?
We have had a motion.
I would entertain a motion.
Some of them.
Mrs. Albaugh has made a motion. May I have a second to her motion that we approve ordinance 423 on the first of two readings?
Second.
I have a second by Council Lady Capery. Any further discussion on the motion? I swear we already did the discussion.
He started reading.
Anyway, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes reflect that the motion carried unanimously. Let my Mr. Rogers sweat.
Yes, Mr. Rogers.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. I don't know, we need you for anything else, Tom.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that.
Well, you know.
I do have a quick question.
Oh, okay.
For Tom.
Consider the source on the quick question.
So how will, particularly people who have contractors' licenses, how will they be informed of this? So that they'll be extra careful of their workers, et cetera?
You know, the council, you know, we may, we may consider issuing some kind of, you know, putting some kind of insert in the.
Permit packet?
Permit, yeah.
Permit packet, yeah, exactly.
Okay, that's a good idea. I like that.
Besides the new coverage that I presume that this ordinance would generate. And, you know, we could even identify any, you know, current outstanding permits and make a, make some kind of notice available.
That's a good idea.
To them, some kind of mailing available to put them on notice, should the ordinance be adopted on second reading in two weeks, and letting them know that their licenses and permits will be in jeopardy should they attempt to bring asbestos to the transfer station.
This is not some clever revenue generating thing. We're a $13 million a year budget organization when you add up the general fund for all the utilities. It's about trying to change people's conduct. And on two different occasions during the past six months alone, we had to shut down our waste collection operations at the transfer station.
I'm not questioning that. I just wanted to make sure that.
No, I agree with her.
That they understood how steep the consequences were.
Yeah, I agree with her.
Because other people can impact that on the contractor.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have an insert, there won't be any questions.
Right.
How much did it cost, David, for us to clean that up?
Couple of thousand dollars.
That we had to eat.
Yeah, second time, we just had to shut down the operation until we confirmed whether or not it was a hot load or not.
Right.
So it cost us both times. The first load was hot, and the entire bin had to be treated as though it was contaminated by asbestos. It's a pain in the rump kind of a thing. All right, Tom.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ambie, you got the magic button here to, thanks, Tom, we'll see you soon.
Give him the boot.
Yeah. That show that I was watching the other night on TV where they hit the switch and the person falls down a tube. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't know. I'm.
I don't know, um, uh, I have experience in real estate and just like you do your lead, lead-based paste, uh, lead-based paint disclosures on that asbestos in that package, you can put an acknowledgement where they read the ordinance. And bottom line, John Doe hereby acknowledged reading of the asbestos ordinance, ordinance is, they have to sign.
Something like that.
You're talking about, uh, mailing somebody's feet to the floor pretty quick.
Yeah. In the one instance, with one of the two instances, the party never bothered to get a permit period to raise the structure.
Wow.
They tore it down, put it in the car, took it out to the transfer station. So, you know, they didn't, they didn't even get the permit, yet alone the fact that there was potential contamination.
It was outside the city limits, wasn't it?
Uh, the first one was, the second one was on Cleveland Avenue.
That's a good point, though.
That is.
Yeah, we'll try to incorporate that in our permit.
Thank you.
F3, uh, there is a letter in your packet that I signed back on July 17th to send to Dee Lowry with, uh, the First Energy Foundation. Teresa Summers spoke with Bryson Van Nostrand earlier today and says that the application is complete, ready for my signature and to give over to City Hall and as of the time we closed at 4:30, the application wasn't here. I would like to move on this. Um, there have been a couple of minor tweaks to the application from what we were considering way back in July. We have been assured that the First Energy Foundation is going to give us money for our theater project. And, uh, the longer we hold off on getting this thing in the mail, the longer it's going to be until we get some money so that we can continue the excellent work that we've already enjoyed, uh, relative to the Colonial Theater. So I'm going to ask council's permission, uh, to authorize me to execute this grant application. Uh, hopefully we'll have the, the final version in my hands tomorrow and then we will include the executed application in the packet for January 18th. If you all are good with that, uh, approach, I would entertain a motion that I be authorized to sign that application.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Mr. Rylance.
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Capery. Is there discussion on the motion?
I'm just not comfortable voting on it, I know what's in it. So I'll either vote no or abstain, but...
Extremely minor tweaks while we took up in July.
Well, there's not, there's not really any details in this, just what you want done, but not with programming or...
First Energy, all right, let me, let me tell you. First Energy Foundation, they wanted to, they wanted to know how much, uh, naming rights would be and we hadn't identified that in the original application. So if they give us $100,000, um, a part of the building such as the foyer or the performing arts area would be the First Energy Foundation foyer at the Colonial Theater.
But this isn't an application, that's why, this is just a letter.
Yep, we, we approved an earlier application that we had to change to conform with the First Energy requirements. And Bryson has undertaken those changes that included the opportunity for them to secure naming rights.
Right, so where's the First Energy? This is just your letter of interest.
It's in the July, uh, July packet way back when. If, if you want to table it to the 18th.
Well, I'm the only person who's concerned about it, so I'm just, I'm abstaining.
I'm not concerned.
Yeah, I just don't remember seeing an application, just this letter of interest.
It's a good question and I, I thought we would have the July application back in here, but it didn't make it.
It's just a letter of interest.
Maybe, maybe we go through with this and approve it, Mayor, and then ask Ambie to get a copy of that.
Yeah.
To be filed with this for matter of record.
Well, yeah, if, if you feel better about waiting on it until the 11th.
If I'm the only one moving on it, I'm just expressing my concern. I, I don't like to approve anything that I haven't seen.
We did see it.
We're not the hard one. No, we didn't. I, I don't remember seeing an application, I just remember seeing a letter of interest and hearing that we would get, see an app, a full application.
Since we are meeting next week.
Yeah.
Anyway, why don't we, why don't we just wait and do that next week? That way we're not waiting a full two weeks and we can, that way we can have it and look at it and everybody will be...
Remember, we got a full water board agenda starting at four o'clock, but I think we can get both these done in 15 minutes. Uh, so would you mind?
Well, rescinding your motion.
I rescind my motion.
All right, well, uh, we'll take it up on the 11th. All right, F4. Reminder to fill board vacancies, I've got some recommendations and I have cleared all of these folks. This has been on the agenda for the last three meetings and I asked all of you if you had any, uh, folks in mind to let me know and nobody let me know, so these are my recommendations to fill the, uh, current board vacancies. I'm going to recommend that the two new members of the Buchanan Planning Commission be Curtis Wilkerson and Matt Kerner. Uh, both of them have, uh, agreed to serve on our planning commission. I'm recommending that the two, uh, vacancies on our animal care and control commission be filled by Allison Clausen and Dr. Tanya Pickens, local veterinarian. And I'm recommending that the city appointee to the fire civil service commission be Abigail Benjamin. Abby is, uh, Rob Rupp's daughter who came back.
And Liz.
A year ago, uh, well...
Then actually gave birth to her.
Rob serves on three different city commissions and boards, so they might know him a little better in the city context than that. But anyway, Abby Rupp, uh, is a local attorney who came here a year ago and she's been looking to get more community active, so I think they're all excellent folks.
And Abi- Abigail agreed also?
Yes, yes, I spoke with all five of these folks, yeah. Any, uh, any thoughts on these matters?
Matt?
I would entertain a motion that we fill these vacancies with these five, uh, folks.
Some of them.
I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Rylance. Is there discussion on this motion?
I agree.
Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. F5, Ambie, you're going to have to explain this one. Approval for Ambie to receive information from state tax department.
Well, it doesn't have to be Ambie, but, um...
Oh, no, you're stuck with this. This is all, this is all yours, Ambie, nobody else.
Well, um, I needed to, I wanted to do a little bit of internal auditing with some of our, uh, taxes that we've received from business and conveno. And to receive that information, of course, you already know that's all confidential information. Anything we receive, anything we obtain from residents about tax information is completely confidential by code. And of course, the state tax department wants to ensure that it remains that way, so they want to kind of limit the access that people have to their, their files. And in order to do that, the mayor has, has to authorize me or some agent to obtain that information and of course, council, uh, needs to authorize the mayor to let someone.
The logical person to exercise this function is our director of finance and administrators. So I would entertain a motion that I be authorized to sign the necessary form with the state tax department, uh, permitting Ambie to engage in those conversations and receipt of documents with our state tax department.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. And I have a second to his motion, Mrs. Albaugh has seconded that. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. And that takes us down to comments and announcements. Mrs. Albaugh.
Okay. Good meeting tonight, everyone, and I hope everybody had a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a New Years. And, um, I'm hoping that this upcoming year, some election time, I am running for office and my partner in crime, who is not here tonight, he said, Mary, go ahead and make that announcement. And I said, nah, I won't do that, but I am going to do that. Okay? Because I think that, um, we are a, a good, strong council, so I'm letting you know that Jake David Thomas and Mary Albaugh are both, um, going to sign up on January the 8th for city council seats. And we appreciate you both.
Anything else, Mayor?
Um, no, we already covered most of the stuff from waste board, so we're good. Thank you.
Pam Capery?
I just want to, um, wish everybody Happy New Year and, uh, want to welcome Callie Sams. Um, looking forward, hopefully she can get a lot of money for us in all areas. But we're hoping for...
Superwoman.
Also, um, in this inclement weather, I hope people are mindful of their neighbors, especially elderly people, to get a check on them. Uh, if you have the time and the energy, get out and clean their sidewalks if you can. And another thing, we have an ordinance about animals being left out in the cold and everything and you will be fined if you get caught, you're in water.
Especially that below zero stuff, this is torturous.
Yeah, it is.
Anything else, Mayor? Thank you. Mr. Rylance?
Well, I would hope that in 2018, we continue to, uh, work together in the community's best interest and, uh, a little phrase that I like to remind myself a lot of times is that, uh, let's get out of the way of success and don't, uh, become a obstructionist or, or otherwise hinder the progress that's happening around us. Uh, and, uh, I see great things happening, uh, and, uh, just continue to work together. And also welcome our new employees and we're all hopeful that they, uh, they are very successful.
Thanks, Andy. Lester Skinner?
I have nothing tonight.
Oh, come on.
Now, I'm sure you have a statement, so I'll, I'll deal to you.
I don't see any paperwork.
Oh, it's over there. It's, it's, it's long, so...
But first, since Dave Thomas isn't here, our excellent, uh, city recorder, who keeps me straight, even when I don't need being straightened up.
You always get straightened out, right?
When you got multiple pages.
Oh, come on. Thanks for asking.
Nothing at all?
Yeah. Skinner would have just skipped over me, that's okay.
This is in the spirit of the governor's State of the, State address and the president's, I, I've got a State of the City address, so bear with me. Will you just pull the sign, go to the bathroom again or something? The beginning of a new year poses a timely opportunity for us to look ahead, to consider our future. I believe that our community is excellently postured to further raise the bar on our quality of life here. Please indulge me for a few minutes as I share our plans, department by department, for 2018. Our utility and public safety operations are the core of our essential services. Our waste collection board will launch its new toter system in March. This will make our services more efficient, more employee friendly, and all residents and businesses alike will be fully accountable for the services provided. All residents will be provided with a 96-gallon container for all garbage that will be picked up and dumped into our collection fleet in an automated way. All containers are encoded with a distinct customer barcode that is automatically read and data entered at time of pickup. In combination with our streets, streets and parks department, we need to realize construction of a new welding and tool building at our mud lick run facility. Jerry Arnold will share details soon. Jeff Wamsley's guys continue to perform in exemplary fashion. Our water board will experience a very busy year. In the next few weeks, we'll integrate the new Victoria Hill water tank into our system and then decommission the St. Joseph's tank. Our reserve water supply will increase by about 600,000 gallons as a result of this activity, all as part of anticipation of future growth in our community, some associated with nearing completion of quarter H. Our cooperative arrangement with the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project will result in the undertaking of about $2 million worth of improvements to our water system that will be borne by ACP. These improvements would have been undertaken in the future in-house with the cost borne by our residents and businesses, so this project pushes us years ahead as our water work system is greatly enhanced without having to increase fees. Currently, and as of December 29th, Buchanan ranks 46th out of the 369 PSC-regulated water utilities in the state of West Virginia. That means we provide our water services among the most affordable communities in all of West Virginia and are at the 12.4 lowest rates in our entire state. The water plant work completed in 2017 has added decades of service to our current plant and thus defers the tens of millions of dollars in plant replacement costs for many, many years. Water superintendent Kelly Arnold's staff is performing outstandingly. Our water works have never been in better position than they are right now. Our sanitary board continues to function in an exemplary manner. Opened in 1987 with a then 30 to 40-year life expectancy, engineers Sam Ludlow and Raz Rizzo now estimate that in 2018, our sewer plant should endure for another 40 to 50 years, given the excellent periodic upgrades and maintenance of our existing physical plant operations, all again undertaken in-house. Currently, and as of December 29th, in following rate increases during the past two years, Buchanan still ranks 143rd out of the 321 PSC-regulated sewer utilities in the state of West Virginia. That means our sewer services still rank among the most affordable communities in all of West Virginia and are at the 44.5% lowest rates in our state. During 2017 and after decades of discussion, all storm sewer operations were formally designated as being undertaken by our sanitary board. Our sewer staff has been engaged in extensive planning within and outside of our corporate limits to improve the storm water system. In streets and parks, there are a number of projects identified for 2018. Many more paving and sidewalk projects are in plan, including near the city seal mural, Cana, Spring, and Florida Streets. Our North Buchanan area will realize important improvements, including sidewalk projects along North Florida Street, First Street, and Morton Avenue. The North Buchanan Park will be rededicated prior to Strawberry Festival with handicap-accessible parking, enhanced ADA compliance, and new playground equipment. Jawbone Park, Stocker Youth Center, Trader's Alley, Milkman Lane, and our public safety complex will realize significant and very visible project improvements. We'll dedicate the new Green Park and Bobcat Benses. Our River Trail will be further enhanced with construction of a new pavilion to be located near the boat ramp and the new dog park. The dog park itself will continue to be developed by our excellent city crews with support funding coming from the volunteers comprising our dog park committee. We will work with the cycling folks and extend our river trail to our high school and beyond. We will advance the Gateway West Project, ultimately realizing sidewalks and period lighting coming off of the first Buchanan exit and continuing all the way to West Virginia Wesleyan College. There will not be a prettier thoroughfare in all of West Virginia when this project is completed. The 16 intersect points downtown will be made entirely ADA compliant as a result of a new state commitment, the value of which is approximately $160,000. We resumed cemetery mowing in-house in 2017, saving our residents thousands of dollars annually while employing new seasonal workers. Grants have permitted us to make tremendous strides in the rehabilitation of the Colonial Theater. We have a new floor that can sustain 200 tons of weight and the new roof nears completion. This facility will be a crown jewel of our community when completed, servicing our arts entities as well as our youth. We had a soft launch of our Stocker Youth Center auditorium gymnasium complex and many more fundraisings are planned as we try to edge closer to undertaking the project for the benefit of our youth. Rob Barber and his crew continue to work their magic. The entrances to town are receiving some much-needed sprucing up, replete with new plantings and lighting. We'll realize community fruit orchards during the 2018 growing season. We're going to expand our wildflower program in 2018. Brad Hawkins's guys simply amaze us. Our police department welcomed a new member in 2017 with the hire of Sammy Chris, who completed his academy training just last month. We're starting 2018 with new testing to replenish our list of eligibles and will replace an officer who resigned in December. Our officers are unanimously committed to Kalia accreditation. We continue to develop holistic policies in addressing our drug epidemic. Kudos to Matt Gregory's excellent officers and staff and special thanks to our VIPs as well for protecting our lives and property. Our fire department similarly welcomed new members in 2017 with John Brugnoli and Tanner Smith, who are performing excellently. Our firefighters are committed to pursuing IFAA accreditation. The collaboration among our paid and volunteer fighters, firefighters continues to establish Buchanan as one of the best-prepared fire departments in the state. Our guys need a new rescue pumper truck and the council needs to prepare for helping them purchase that new vehicle in 2018. This vehicle will permit us to retire two or three 1990s vehicles from our fire fleet. We will partner with the county commission and the volunteers to realize the necessary funds, but this new, fully-equipped vehicle... funds, but this new fully equipped vehicle is expected to cost about $500,000. Thanks to all of our firefighters for their selfless time and commitment to protecting our lives and property. We'll complete the exterior improvements to the public safety complex with new lighting, reconfigured parking spaces, landscaping, and dedication of the new police department blue wall to complement the fire department's red wall dedicated during Friendly Way Day in 2017. Our community scrap block, scrap pile will come to be dedicated in the frequently used community and training room, which by the way, needs a few more tables and chairs. Callie Cronin-Sams will make us better information sharers while we are very confident that we'll realize more grant opportunities than ever before. Ambie Jenkins, our finance and administration director, continues to perform yeoman's work for us, and our city hall staff has never been stronger than it is right now. 2018 will see Harbor Freight locate its second West Virginia store right here within our corporate limits. Stone Tower Brews will open later this month. The Innovation Center will break ground during 2018. The Opera House will be completed by Strawberry Festival. Developers continue to invest substantially in our downtown. We have virtually 100% storefront occupancy on Main Street. We'll continue to make community care and St. Joseph's Hospital successful as we partner with both entities on projects. We'll continue to work with the American Legion and VFW on various projects, including plans to develop the Veterans Way Loop and expand the Flags for the Fallen Project. We'll partner with the West Virginia Strawberry Festival to again help stage the most successful festival in all of West Virginia. It's the single most important event each year in our community, and it's an opportunity to show off what we do to the, for the entire region. We'll continue to work closely with Create Buchanan, Art 26201, Buchanan Community Theater, Buchanan Choral Society, and all other arts related groups to expand public arts in all forms, visual and performing. Our primary partners will benefit from our collaboration. West Virginia Wesleyan College, St. Joseph's Hospital, the Upshur County Commission, the Upshur County School System, the CVB, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Development Authority. We'll continue to support small business through our facade grants program. The new parking policy, now fully affected, will be a gift to residents, visitors, and downtown businesses alike. We will continue to honor and support the blessing box and little free library programs and excellent volunteers, and the excellent volunteers that make those programs so successful and distinguish Buchanan from all other places. We will continue to partner with Matt Kerner and Opportunity House to remove the stigma of addiction while creating a welcoming environment for those in recovery. We'll partner in the second annual Haha Hope and Help Assembly in September, followed by our Children's Festival, Truck Fest, Fall Fest, and the Haunted River Trip. Festival Fridays are already scheduled for a full summer season. We'll enjoy another year of music on the river on summer Sunday evenings. We'll collaborate with the River Festival Group as they celebrate our community's water supply late next summer. We will do all these things while being cleaner, greener, and more sustainable than ever before. We will do all these things while being more inclusive than ever before. We shall not tolerate the actions of those who seek to divide us. Anyone, regardless as to their race, ethnicity, gender, religion, age, handicap, or orientation, who seeks to be part of our many successes is invited to participate with us and to offer their help to making our community even better. Our mission is not to be the best community around. Our community, our mission is simply to be the best community that we can be. I have no doubt that with our excellent staff of 80, 85 full-time employees, that we shall take our community to another level during 2018. Our outstanding employees make all these things possible. As we begin the budgeting process for the 2018-19 fiscal year next month, and recalling my commitment to our employees that this council honored back in October of 2016 by then approving a 50 cent per hour pay raise for all full-time employees, I ask us to work together, that is, this city council and our four utility boards, to find the means to implement an additional modest cost of living increase effective July 1, 2018, of an additional 50 cents an hour for all of our full-time employees. I'd like to establish a municipal minimum wage of $10 per hour for all full-time city employees. Our success as a city is attributed to our folks in the trenches who are repairing broken utility lines at 3:00 AM when it's below zero, the guys who answer the police and fire calls at all hours and under the most unpleasant of circumstances, our workers who are hanging off the back of garbage trucks. We need to recognize the value of those labors, and we need to retain our very valuable workforce. We truly are all in this together. That's all I have. I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
And we not need an executive session?
Uh, yes, we do need to have a short executive session. May I have a motion that we adjourn it to the executive session after we convene out of regular sessions?
Some move.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. I have a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there discussion on that motion? No decisions that we made in the executive session. Thank you all for coming.
Mr. Dusimer, thanks for coming. Appreciate it, Ambie.
Thank you.